Bigger than thirty seconds. Everybody ready to go?
Ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, Marlene won't be here tonight, so.
How's Marlene?
She's, uh, she's sounding really good.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I had a nice conversation with her. A little short conversation, but a good one today, so. Yeah. Well, um, let's get this, uh, meeting going if everybody could. Uh, call the order. Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission Meeting, May sixth, two thousand twenty-one. At seven P M. Everybody rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Fans.
One nation, under God.
Your God. Thank you. Now, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Here, Manistee.
Commissioner Samanski.
Here, Manistee.
Commissioner Mimberto.
Here, Manistee.
Commissioner Weiner.
Here, Manistee.
Commissioner McBride. Commissioner Yoder.
Here, Manistee.
Chair Whitlock.
Here, Manistee. Thank you. Approve of the agenda. This time the planning commission can take action to approve the May sixth, two thousand twenty-one agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
By Pam, any discussion? None? Please take roll.
Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samanski.
You're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Mimberto.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitlock.
Yes, thank you. Uh, approval of minutes. This time the planning commission can approve the April first, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Samanski, I'll make that motion.
Nick, second.
I'll second it.
Roger? Or is that Bob?
Roger.
Roger?
Roger.
Any discussion?
No, that's Roger.
Please take roll.
Mr. Slawinski.
Yes.
Mr. Samanski.
Yes.
Mr. Mimberto.
Yes.
Mr. Weiner.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitlock.
Yes, thank you. Uh, correspondence.
No. No, we've got the other seven minutes there. Twenty, twenty nineteen. Uh, I think during the COVID.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry about that. Gotcha. Missed that. This time the planning commission can approve the March twentieth, two thousand nineteen meeting minutes, just a couple days ago. Is there a motion? Everybody had time to look it over?
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Roger, second.
Second.
By Bob, any discussion? None, please take roll.
Mr. Slawinski.
Yes.
Mr. Samanski.
Yes.
Mr. Mimberto. Mr. Weiner.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitlock.
Yes, thank you. Now, we can get into the correspondence. There's probably several letters. Read, and I will turn it over to Zach and Mike.
All right, I'll take the first one here. Manistee Planning Commission, to whom it may concern, as a resident of the City of Manistee, I do not approve of the current plans for the proposed First Street Beach Hotel. The huge hotel size, bland and unimaginative design do not fit into one of the most pristine, extraordinary, unique pieces of beachfront property on the shores of Lake Michigan. A five-story hotel does not fit into this beachfront property. The Manistee Planning Commission should be seeking a beachfront hotel design that is creative, inspires, and enhances the property, not a large imposing structure that will dominate and overpower one of the most beautiful beaches in our region. I do favor the creative development for this hotel property, but the proposed plans are more like a commercial highway interchange-style hotel. This beachfront property calls for something smaller, more of a, more of a boutique-style hotel. Think of a creative, magical design that would inspire people in the future years, not a structure that looks like every other common lodging place. So it is time to think outside the box, think bigger and higher. As a planning commission, please demand more from the potential developers. It says that they need our vision of our community, community, not their one-size-fits-all designs. I urge you not to approve this current beachfront hotel site plan from Suburban Inns. Sincerely, Linda Alby.
Hello, Planning Commission members. As a Manistee taxpayer and homeowners, or as Manistee taxpayers and homeowners for over a hundred years, much enjoyable time has been spent on the fabulous beachfront picnic areas and playgrounds at First Street Beach. It is now under immense threat of overdevelopment by a mega monster of a hotel that will forever change what Manistee has had to offer travelers and locals in the past, a wonderful experience without the constant huge crowds that overdevelopment brings. That is not to say that we are against change there. Just a more reasonable approach, we would feel would be a two-to-three-story building that would blend in with the surrounding natural and residential area around it. The city still gets more tax dollars and more jobs with a reasonable approach. We have heard in the past, the city denied a two-to-three-story hotel, so why would they now, why would, excuse me, so why now would a mega-five-story hotel be allowed on this smart, small parcel with zoning that past Manistee leaders thought appropriate? Thought, no, it is thought appropriate. This is highly desirable Lake Michigan front property. Parcel and any other number of other hotel chains would likely jump at the chance to do a reasonable development here if Hampton Inn owners won't reconsider. By taking a more reasonable approach for this light industrial or light residential zone parcel, the, the parking space issue comes into compliance with zoning, makes it less of an issue for fire protection, reduces the stress on sewer and water needs, and reduces the congestion issue of constant traffic on First Street and Cherry Street residential properties. Luddington has no mega hotels on its beachfront. Do you want First Street Beach to look like Traverse City? Even they don't have five-story hotels along their beachfront. For all these reasons, allowing more development on the site will destroy the wonderful na- natural, pure Michigan Manistee appeal that the city is known for. What is next for the residential properties at Fifth Avenue when mega hotels are allowed free railing to overpower local zoning regulations? Thank you for your careful consideration on this very important issue that will forever impact future generations of each of beach and park users. Jennifer and Dale Teller, Harbor Drive, Manistee.
Worry that you may be able to assuage. Is there a way to assure that such, that at such time as it becomes in suburban inn's best interest to sell the proposed motel, the next owner will maintain it as well as Peter Buchmann says suburban ins will maintain it and keep, and keep it a Hampton Inn? In case it will help your perspective, this webpage indicates the terms of the Hampton Inn agreement between suburban ins and Hilton franchise holdings. Among other terms, it says the length of the initial franchise term for new construction hotels is generally twenty-two years. Franchisees, franchisees do not have the right to renew or extend the franchise agreement. The webpage lists the kinds of, the kinds of fees that suburban ins will have to pay to the franchiser, starting with a seventy-five thousand dollar franchise application fee and continuing with additional varying fees that will total a very substantial amount. Will you please pass this link to the Planning Commission Board members for their consideration prior to the next meeting? Thank you for doing a very difficult job. Sincerely, Richard Blue.
Your Manistee Planning Commission, it is of great concern we write to you today regarding the plans of Hampton Inn Hotel and First Street Beach, Manistee. As graduates of Manistee High School and current residents near Grand Haven, a top-rated Michigan beach town, we can only hope and wish the same will come to fruition for Manistee, our beloved hometown. We frequent Manistee multiple times a year to take advantage of the many outdoor activities Manistee has to offer. We enjoy bringing our children back to experience acquaintances that we too experienced as kids. Building a commercial hotel on a premier and pristine location along the shores of Lake Mission would be a detriment to one of our greatest assets. Our beautiful lakes or Manistee beaches should be held to the highest standard for future lodging accommodations and restaurant accommodations. Combined, we have nearly twenty years' experience working for the City Parks Department directly with tourists. Jeff was a lifeguard and head lifeguard for eleven years, and Betsy was a marina attendant and manager for the Manistee Municipal Marina for seven years. We work daily with tourists and visit Manistee for the beautiful beaches and boating options. However, as Manistee began losing business during the recession, we found that tourists were missing the local quaint stores for stores and restaurants. Prior experience, Manistee tourists are not seeking a five-story Hampton Inn on the beach. As Jeff is an avid kite porter, we have spent countless hours admiring our Michigan beaches. Where generally, we are greatly concerned with the five-story Hampton Inn would impact overall beach experience for local residents and traveling tourists under the current building plans. Because of the impact this would have on Manistee, we ask, have other plans been submitted? Have you listened to your community and your, the desires they have regarded this place, a property before obtaining plans from prospective hotel operations? We are asking you to please consider other building plans for the future of First Street Beach. For inspiration, please look to the Hotel Walloon located on Walloon Lake, Michigan. The quaint luxury hotel rests upon a beautiful Lake Michigan, uh, lake with beach access and full-service open-air lake front restaurant. The barrel-back restroom is surrounded by garage, or glass garage doors that can be opened during prime summer and spring and summer months while still offering a gorgeous feel during cooler seasons. The award-winning and successful hotel offers luxurium, luxury amenity, luxury amenities while maintaining the relaxed feel of Lake Light. With the right development, Manistee could and should be the envy of the shoreline communities. We would like to thank you in advance for consideration, considering other options before making this monumental change to our coveted Lake Michigan shoreline. And ask that you do not feel pressured to make a decision on this matter tonight. For your convenience, we have included a link to Hotel Walloon's website, as well as a photo of their hotel and restaurant, respectively Jeff and Betsy Beach.
Manistee County, Manistee County Planning Department. I've seen only negative letters regarding the sale of, of Lake Shore Motel to Hampton Inn, so I'm adding my positive thoughts as well. I get it. We don't like change. I'm sure a lot of us will miss House of Flavors, but we can't control the outcome of, of that sale. The City of Manistee needs a change if you want the local and downtown area to survive. There, there are so many local mom-and-pop stores that is, that are struggling because of the last year, and this is a proposed sale. And this proposed sale would be a boost for them, as well as a, as local golf courses, restaurants, and businesses in general. Overall, I don't see a downside to this proposed sale. Barb Hurst.
Your members of the Manistee City Council and Manistee Planning Commission, thank you for your service to our community. I'm writing to express my thoughts about the proposed First Street Beach Hotel. I'm not opposed to a new hotel slash motel at this location. However, I am proposed, are opposed to the current proposed plan. As we have let lie during the last planning commission meeting, below are some concerns I urge you to take under consideration. Manistee does have a beach master plan. Why are you not using that plan as a guide? That plan should be a guide as we consider any new development. We have a zoning ordinance for our, our community beach area. Why is the current zoning ordinance not being followed for this plan? I think the zoning ordinance for that area is no structure over thirty-five feet. If you continue to alter and make exceptions for the zoning ordinance, what good is an ordinance? Why have one? If this unique valuable piece of private beach property right in the middle of a public park is so pristine or remarkable, why are we not thinking more creatively in development of lodging facility on the property? Why not develop, why not demand more from a developer? Do not accept whatever they want to give us. We should have a vision for our community and expect individuals wishing to develop in our community to meet our vision, not just what they want to give us. If we think, if you think that a huge five-story cookie cutter, dull, uninspiring hotel is not right fit for our beach, then tell the developer to alter his plans to fit our vision. The Hampton Inn developer stated during the presentation to the planning commission that he thought the property was special and unique. If he really believes that, why is he planning to put such an uncreative, average freeway-style lodging facility? As political leaders and political appointees of our community, we have, we must have confidence and pride in what our community has to offer. The First Street Beach is one of the largest assets of the city. We kind of must require that any structure built on the beach does not does not degrade it, but must improve it with a more creative, original lodging facility. We must think of what the First Street Beach is going to look like in ten years. Once the tax depreciation schedule runs out, will the proposed owner look for a new owner, possibly a budget hotel? Economic, economic development is essential to, for our community. But to overwhelm our public beach with a five-story uninspired cookie cutter, not creative structure for thirty to thirty-five, mostly lower-wage jobs does not fit any good. It might, does not fit my idea of good economic development. Please demand any development or planning to put up a lodging facility in that public beach property must be able to make, uh, the entire project fit into the space, not require more public land for parking, etc. I do hope you will seriously look at the terms mentioned above. Let's make the First Street Beach truly pristine, unique, and classy by building a hotel motel that will stand the test of time and truly fit into the public park setting. Regards, Linda Alby, three six five, Lighthouse Way, South Manistee.
Some questions regarding the agreement with the hotel about their use of the boat lounge parking lot. Most of the time, there are a few cars there and boat trailers there, but Labor Day weekend and weekends during salmon fishing run in the fall, there, there are, are very few parking spaces left. I would think, I would think that would be prime occupancy for the hotel as well. Has there been discussion on, on plan for those days? If the hotel takes priority, the Manistee would also lose its attraction as a fishing destination, which has also been a large part of its identity in, in its recent history. Possibly that it isn't seen as a problem and even has an improved, as an improvement, though. But if losing that identity could cause problems for the charter fishing business. After researching retention ponds, this is, this is some of the information I have found and raises, and raises concerns about what kind of an arrangement has been made with the hotel with regards to these issues. They focus on the maintenance of the pond and the danger of having it near areas where many children are playing and families are holding gatherings. Please add this letter to tonight's meeting. Not only, not only do they pose a constant drowning hazard for residents, but they also require continuous maintenance and planning. Attention pond maintenance. An unkept retention pond is destined to fail. If the local government does not own it, it becomes the association's responsibility to keep the pond in working order, and they are responsible for any expenses incurred. This includes regular inspections, especially after severe storms or heavy rain. It identified in, in repair areas of erosion gullies and other damage, removing sediment and debris from the pond before they reach the outlets. What type of maintenance is required for a detention pond to function properly? Mowing, trimming, and keeping vegetation under control, keeping the pond clear of trash and debris, maintaining the chemical elements in and around the pond, stabilized slopes, removing excess sediment from the basin overflow and inflow pipes, basin outflow pipes and inflow pipes. Repet- retention ponds are, retention ponds are inundated with all kinds of nutrients and chemicals. Over time, the retention pond stops doing its job that can lead to aesthetic issues, overgrown water weeds, wildlife sickness, death, and flooding. Beth Wilkie.
We are in favor of Lake Shore Motel Development Project. The positive economic impact for the City of Manistee would be beneficial to our area. We have been visiting Manistee area and have stayed in the Lake Shore Motel for many years. The new project would bring good things that are needed, indeed needed. The vacant buildings downtown in the US thirty-one corridor are an obvious sign. Let's go, Manistee. Moving forward, it will not only help the community financially, but it will bring infrastructure improvements that are needed to improve the function of those utilities. We will continue to frequent Manistee and look forward to staying at the new motel on the lake shore. Thank you for your time, Scott and Kim Merriman.
Your Planning Commission members, on behalf of the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce and the undersigned businesses, we would like to ask for your support and yes votes on an important development in the City of Manistee. The Chamber's economic development team has been working with the developers of a planned one-hundred-and-six-room hotel at one-on-one South Lake Shore since early fall, and the project will greatly help the area business, community, and regional economy. We support the planned unit development application put forward by the developers. The project by Suburbans, by Suburban Inns and Pioneer Construction will create new jobs and is expected to increase local visitor spending by eighteen million annually. Economic impacts will support local small business owners who own restaurants, bars, convenience stores, party stores, transportation, and businesses associated with the outdoor recreation industry. The eighteen million additional dollars in visitor spending, spending will be brought in by an estimated sixty-five thousand new visitors and will create conditions for local entrepreneurs to open and support new businesses, populate empty storefronts, and create new jobs. This project will increase local and state share of property taxes. This additional tax base will provide support for local government services and potentially relieve future property tax burdens on homeowners, new business owners, and entrepreneurs. Furthermore, the hotel project will offer an updated and positive experience for visitors who are looking for this type of lodging experience to make their, their, their vacation and business decisions. This will be an updated experience from the previous business, offering an incremental improvement that will have broad appeal and provide options in the upper mid lodging market segments. Manufacturers and other businesses who have, who have lodging needs often find that visitors seek out this market segment in other areas like Luddington and Traverse City. The undersigned local businesses represent eight hundred jobs in our community. These business leaders recognize the importance of moving our community forward and the positive incremental change that development will bring to, to Manistee. Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Stacy Byward. Under signed Andrew Records, Andrew Richards Packaging Corporation of America, Jim Rithel, Martin Marietta, Dennis McCarthy, Larny Castle and Propane, Aaron Hatzel, Cape Air, James Border, Audrey, Manistee Beverage, Zachary Paulin, Paulowski, Manistee Media, Kerry Masher, The Outpost of Manistee, Shelley Doyen, The Ideal Kitchen, Manistee's Mark Sandstead, MS Creative, Mary Murphy, Snyder Shoes, Brandon Ball, Dwelling Realty, Ted Ficano, Ficano's on Manistee River, Michael Adams, TJ's Pub, Sally Kuhn, Jack Pine Business Center, Rick Link, Link's Autobody Shop, Kellen Keck, City to Shore Real Estate, Suzanne Riley, Century Twenty-One Board Rock, Little River Development LLC, Patrick and Anita, Anita Schaefer, and Port City Emporium, and Kevin Hughes, Sandpiper Charters.
To whom it may concern, although the Hampton Inn is our favorite place to stay, I would not want one of our, one on our beautiful First Street Beach. Surely there is another desirable place in the city area they could build. Sincerely, Phyllis Hanba. Yeah, yeah, any words, Zach?
Last one.
All right.
Manistee Planning Commission, I'm writing this letter in support of the proposed Hampton Inn property located at First Street Beach. I've been in contact with suburban ins along with current property owners, and there is no question they have nothing but the best interest of Manistee in mind when it comes to this development. I'm stunned to see the pushback over a beautiful project like the Hampton Inn that we have now become known as the Port City with the opening of several marijuana facilities. As someone who was born and raised in Manistee and is also the current owner of a prominent downtown business, I see Manistee develop a poor reputation for not encouraging new growth. Let's change that. Manistee has an enormous amount of potential, and we have continued to watch surrounding communities grow and prosper. Now is our time, and we feel honored that a family-owned business such as Suburban Inns can see that potential and has a real vision and real resources to bring something amazing to this community. Please do not let this opportunity pass by us. Sincerely, Lindsay Swodorski.
As a former Manistee resident, I write to encourage you to support the proposed hotel project at First Street Beach. Manistee is a great town, and its beaches are arguably the most beautiful in the state. I've worked for many years in Mackinac area, and I know firsthand what that tourists desire and will pay premium for beachside lodging with amenities. The proposed hotel would capture some of the visitors that are now traveling to Traverse City or Mackinac to enjoy a beach view. The hotel will provide new jobs and attract additional visitors, which can only benefit our other businesses in town. If Manistee is opposed to modernization, then I would suggest that the city purchase the property as it already owns all the surrounding property. If that is not a possible, or if that is not possible, and don't languish, and let the opportunity for a betterment of a Manistee slip away. Sincerely, Dennis and Diane Dembrowski.
Those are all the letters?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mike and Zach. Next, public hearing. Uh, we'll open the public hearing, seventy-four Arthur Street, Marijuana Grove, Special Use Permit Amendment. So I'd like to turn it over to the applicants.
Uh, good evening, Planning Commission. Uh, my name is William McKenzie. I'm the CEO of Heritage Farms. You'll have to excuse me, I had a little, uh, surgery on my nose and sinuses on Tuesday, so my voice sounds a little funny. Uh, so bear with me if, if you don't understand me, please ask me to repeat something. Uh, Zach, we ready to share?
Yep, you, you can share when you're ready.
Okay. So, as I stated before, my name is Willie McKenzie. I'm from Heritage Farms. I am looking tonight to amend my special use permit. We are located at seventy-four Arthur Street. We currently have a retail center there. And what we're looking to do is amend our special use permit to change it from retail to mixed use in order to add a cultivation facility. Our intent is to, to, uh, convert the existing storage buildings that are there on the back of the property. You can't really see them from the road, but if you're familiar with the property, there's about fifteen thousand square feet of storage building there in the back. Um, and we're hoping to turn those into an indoor grow facility. I've familiarized myself with the development plans for both the City of Manistee and, and Manistee County. And I feel like this program, this project, uh, is an excellent fit for, for what the city and county are trying to do. This is a, a peek of what the buildings look like currently. Essentially pole barn storage buildings. There are three of them plus a, a shop. Uh, total square footage of fifteen thousand square feet. These are presently in decent shape and fairly underutilized. Here's a rendering of what we'd like to do. We would eliminate all the garage doors, re-side them, install security, fire prevent, prevention, and all the other required state and municipal upgrades, and then we'd add landscape for beautification. One of the main advantages of this project that we're gonna do here is, is job creation. So there will be two management roles hired from the local community and ten additional jobs created for various levels of cultivators. Currently, I have the retail shop there at seventy-four Arthur Street, as well as a, a grow and processor out on Collins Road in Brown Township. And I've been employing twenty-five local people since last May, so for a year now. Uh, through the pandemic, being as we were in essential business. I know one of the main concerns being in a populated area is odor mitigation. Um, so I just kind of wanted to run you through quickly what we do. We run a closed-loop system, so our rooms do not vent to the outdoors at all. These are completely sealed rooms, and we control a hundred percent of the environmental factors with high-tech monitoring programs. The air within the rooms is constantly filtered. We add, we add CO2, we add humidity, we dehumidify. We use air movers and split air units to control temperature, humidity, and CO2 levels. All these steps lead to zero scent emission from the buildings. So really the key to, to our grow program So really, the key to our grow program is that these rooms are a hundred percent sealed. If there are any air leaks, we are not optimizing our system. And I have my design already submitted to a third-party engineer, and he is verifying our odor mitigation system, and that will be submitted along with our grow application. This is, this is just a picture of the control panel at our Collins facility, so everything is controlled from this little computer screen here, it's touchscreen, it also goes to my phone. So if one of the variables goes off, if it gets too warm in there, if one of the fans shuts down, if it gets too humid, I get a notification to my phone, and I can either turn it on from my phone or know that I need to head down to the facility and change something. Another one of the biggest advantages I see is that, you know, we've already invested about two and a half million dollars into the community between our three projects that we have, and this project is slated to bring two-point-four million dollars into local businesses. That includes local contractors, GCs, electricians, HVAC, plumbers, local suppliers, the hardware stores, the lumber companies, the concrete plant, the plumbing stores, and then local vendors, restaurants, insurance brokers, realtors. We're using local people for everything, so I think if you talk to people in the local community, they're familiar with us at this point and the kind of business that we run, and I think people are happy to have us. One thing that I knew was going to be a potential question for you guys was going to be with the fire department, so I went ahead and asked them to come up. So they drove their trucks up through the facility and made sure that they had plenty of room to maneuver around, and we do have a driveway in and a driveway out, so they can go straight through without turning around. We spoke with them about potential location for Knox boxes, and then I had Summit Fire Protection come out at their behest and give us a quote for fire sprinklers, because one of the questions was whether the city water supply was going to have enough flow to support a fire sprinkler system. And Summit was able to verify with the water engineers that yes, there is sufficient water flow. And then I know one of the questions from especially the chief of police will be around security. This will be my fourth facility that I'm building here in the state, so I'm extremely familiar with these security regulations, and I can tell you that we follow them all to the T. This will be a very safe facility, just like the rest of them. I know that in, in previous iterations here with you guys, I've talked about the residential unit upstairs from the shop. At this point, we have removed that from our special use permit. I know you guys are still moving forward with changing the ordinance, but I ended up having to, to find something else. I bought a house that I could rent to employees because it was, we ran into timing issues with the short-term rental running out, and we had to find a place to live, so. That's all I have for you guys, I didn't want to take too much of your time. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
I believe that the city council already approved the change in the ordinance to allow for residents.
That was last night, yes.
They did, I just wasn't able to, Diane had to move from her short-term rental, and it wasn't going to line up unfortunately, timing-wise.
Okay, there we go. I'm sorry, I was on mute. So, Mr. McKenzie, we'll get to the discussion here in a little bit, but I'd like, we thank you for that, and just want to turn this over to Zachary for site plan review.
Yeah, so, so kind of to go along with the site plan review, I know, I think I've got the memo in your packet, but it's kind of word from the attorney, because I know there was some confusion whether, you know, this was allowable in a C1 or not, and I'll just cut to just the quote from, from the attorney where he says, "When this issue came up a couple of months ago, I reviewed the zoning ordinance and saw that grow is allowed in C1. It had not been my understanding, so I went back and checked the ordinance adoption and saw that we had adopted the zoning ordinance that allowed for growth within C1." And George later went on to say, "When the overlay district was adopted, grow was not included in that action, but it was already part of what was already authorized in C1 as a special use." So that's George's word saying that, you know, this isn't allowable use because it's an underlying district within the overlay district. As far as the site plan review committee, the city DPW and city engineer indicated that there was no water sewer improvement, so therefore they had no comments on that. The hard surface, the hard surface paving looks to be partial, a partial removal and replacement with some area removed, so there's no change in stormwater. The project will utilize previously-approved driveway access, so they had no comments there, so those, both of those seem to be okay. City fires said they want a hydrant near the top of the hill at the entrance of the buildings, because there's a greater than a four-hundred-foot reach there for their trucks, it kind of is an issue with the water pressure. The fire department also wants to see the proposed fire suppression plans and include the flow rate calculations on that as well as the locations of their FTC. That's pretty common, they ask with most new, new buildings and facilities like that. They want fire flow calculations to be provided and knockstop, Knox box and the approximate FTC connections again there are fine. Confirmation is needed that all access roads are of sufficient structure and basis support fire department vehicles and maintain your own. I think Willie kind of covered that, so they seem to be okay with that portion, and city police just wants to, wants to finalize the surveillance cameras on, on all sides of the buildings and the physical barriers to segregate members of the public from walking up and just walking into a building. So those are the comments from the site plan review committee.
Zach, I have a question, and maybe you or Willie can answer. Was, was the parking changes that, were they addressed for that parking lot down by the retail facility?
That, those were addressed by the city engineer, and I think he gave the okay, so it's just a matter of finishing that up, last I recall. Is that correct, Willie?
That's correct, we're ready to go.
Could I ask, could I ask a question? This is, this is Roger Yoder out of Planning Commission. Now, you just spoke about the parking, and I'm looking at your blueprints. How many, are you talking, or how many bodies are going to be in the operation of this so-called project that we're going to have parking for?
Yeah, so there's, there's two separate parking areas. The parking down below is for the retail shop.
Yeah.
Up above, we have parking for employees, and we'll have, we'll have eight people working there at any given time.
Eight people?
Yeah.
Oh, you got parking for eight people, okay, thank you, all right. Yeah, it's my question, I'm done.
That, that is, that? That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will open the public comment on this, seventy-four Arthur Street. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment, please state your name and address, please, and you have three minutes for your comment.
So anyone who has a comment on this item here, go ahead and raise your hand if you're on your, on your phone or your tablet, and if you called in, I think you press star six.
Star six down to you.
Star six on mute, so it's star nine to raise your hand.
Not physically, but I think Mr. Henderson wants to talk.
I got him there.
Yes, my name is Roy E. Henderson, and I own the adjacent property, which is about twice the size of this property in question at seventy-eight Arthur Street there in Manistee, and I totally object to this for, for several reasons, and I, my son and I, Roy Henderson the second, both have prepared a statement so that we can meet the three-minute timeline, and I'll turn it over to, to Roy.
It is a normal function of local government to make sometimes contentious and objectionable land use planning decisions. They may plan for new airports, longer runways, roadways, and other things that impact local neighborhoods, frequently in ways that disturb neighborhoods and their character. While these decisions are frequently contentious and imperfect, they are more often than not understood as being for the public good. What is the public good for imposing this neighborhood blight and having to be forced to tolerate cannabis cultivation next door? Park growers will be making a lot of money at our expense. Our property plans and the actual value of the property will be negatively impacted. As my father stated, we have nine acres, which is over double the size of this proposed sites property, and it's ideal for options and using this property for home sites, children's facilities, and even a public park. Whatever we do, we would use local services and people to do it. It's gorgeous view property up high overlooking the entire city of Manistee and the harbor. It's just too good for a piece of property to be demeaned by a proposed weed grow site. As William said, he had experienced housing issues with his family in the area. We would help with the local housing issue and provide much-needed space for incoming families to use, whatever we decide to do. Our only means of access to our acreage, which was established by the state of Michigan, the former owner of the property, so anyone coming onto our property would have to pass by the weed factory, and will destroy the potential for business and residential development that could include facilities for children and their parents, as stated earlier. The county should put in place provisions to protect the character of the neighborhood. Weed is both a cause and object of criminality, whether these proposed weed growers like it or not. Cannabis is still illegal according to federal law, meaning most banking institutions cannot provide banking services to cannabis businesses. The result of this could be that high amounts of cash could be on the property at any given time, that could be subject for theft and related violence. I wouldn't be surprised if we had to expect a constant physical security protection service in the form of armed guards to protect our assets. There are mounting deterrents that impact what we are able to do on our property and for the Manistee community. This is just not appropriate place to do it.
Anyone else? Like to make a comment?
Go ahead and raise your hand if you have a comment on this item. Press star nine to raise your hand on your phone, or star six down to you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make, to make a comment on this? Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Hey, hey, I'd like to, I'd like to comment. My name's Joy Smith, I live at one sixty-four Harris Street here in Manistee, and I wasn't aware of this situation until a minute ago, but I'm familiar with that property, and I realized it belonged to the state, was behind the state police post. It's a grand view spot of the area. I'm not against a growing facility in town, but it does seem like that would be not the best place to put one. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Any of the comments? Okay, we will move along to discussion. So, we're going to try something different here, little different because of these Zoom meetings, and this is to the commissioners. For discussion purposes, a call on each commissioner for their comment. This will keep the over-talking from one, one commissioner to the next. So we'll try it tonight, see how it goes, and let's get on with it then. So first, we'll go to Pam.
Yeah, I just, I had a real quick question. The way I understood it, there has to be a fire hydrant put in up at top of the hill. Whose expense is that going to be? Is that the city's or theirs or?
That would be done in my expense.
At your expense, okay. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Pam. Move to Shelley.
Actually, I don't have any questions from Mr. McKenzie, but Mr. Henderson, maybe I missed it. How long did you say you've owned that property?
Yes, we've owned, yes, we've owned the property now, I would, I think it must be about seven years.
And during that seven years, have you brought plans forward to do any of the things that you spoke about?
We have not brought plans at this particular point in time. I will say, though, I'm glad we have the opportunity to say this, that when I bought the property from the state of Michigan, they included with that property was, was a paid-for right-of-way to, the only way to get on this property is by going through the Adamski property, and with that right in mind, the city transferred, I mean, the state transferred everything, including the right-of-way, and the current owner, Mr. Adamski, sued us saying that we didn't have a right, so we settled with him by paying him thousands of dollars to give us that right, and it's the only way we can get in and out of this property.
Thank you. I don't have anything else, Mark.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Shelley. Move along to Nick.
You know, again, you know, this is a, a storage facility now. I don't see having the grow facility there is going to change the character or the nature of that property at all. If, if anything, it may enhance it. Right now, there's nothing attractive. I go up there, you know, the current owners of the storage facility allow Habitat for Humanity to have a space there, and we use that, but again, it is just that, it's a metal storage facilities and some containers on that lot, so I don't see that it would detract from any future use in the neighborhood. From my understanding of grow facilities, they're very innocuous, they, they blend into the, you know, into the environment, they don't have cash. The city of Manistee has already made the decision to have retail marijuana sales in the area. They've also already, again, there are opportunities or have been opportunities right from the beginning to grow on-premise for some types of marijuana facilities. So again, I, you know, again, I don't know where, what goes behind closed doors would have an impact on future development of property in and around that area, so I see no issues with supporting the initiative to have the grow facility. Ten jobs is ten jobs.
Okay. That it, Nick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Move along to Roger.
Yeah, I would just like to say, as far as from what the pictures the man showed us, it would definitely improve the property, and if it's all self-contained, I don't see where that would bother if somebody was going by it, you wouldn't even know what it is. So I really don't, in considering what's being used up there now, I, I think it would be positive. I don't have an issue with it. Thank you, and that's it.
Okay, thanks, Roger.
Sure.
And move along to Bob.
Okay, the times I've been up in that area looking around, I feel like that facility is kind of run down and needs some sprucing up majorly. Every time I've been up there, it seems like almost kind of a trash hall where you can't see it's that way because it's way up higher. almost kind of a trash hall where you can't see it's that way because it's way up higher out of view from the surrounding properties. Anything we can do to make that better up there? I'm for. That's it.
Okay, question. This goes along with the 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 access to the to seventy-eight Arthur. Um, Mr. McKenzie, are you purchasing the property, leasing the property?
We're purchasing the property.
Okay. Is there a way that you and the Harrisons Hendersons, excuse me, could work together on public access? Or and this is a question for Zach and Mike, is that even legal, I guess, with a with a growth facility?
Yeah, I mean, if they have an easement, I don't have a problem with them accessing their property.
So that was something I was gonna ask him. Uh, you know, the easements probably for a certain size, it's within the deed usually. Um, that they are, they must maintain it. Um, it looks like the area that that would what I assume would be the easement is going to be paved and um, a portion of that looks like parking. Without looking at the easement language directly or knowing how wide it is, maybe Willie can answer this. Willie, is it just the drive area um, that is the easement or is it going to be, uh, is it wider than that or?
Just that driveway that goes up the hill.
Okay, is it? How how wide is it?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell eighteen feet.
Okay, how wide is the uh, is the current drive and then through the parking areas? Um, that's my only concern really is that um, those parking areas would have to be outside of that eighteen feet. Because they are supposed to be able to access it. So um, a wide truck coming through there or a fire truck um, in the future would have to be able to have access with it as well. So that eighteen feet, the parking has to start on the outside of it. Um, otherwise, it looks like it's an improvement as far as paving it um, over a dirt road. Um, so, you know, but usually when you look at easements, uh, uh, they uh, they're usually between the landowners, but um, with this being a special use and then the paving and the parking being um, part of that, that is something that should be looked at.
And I don't, we have plenty of space there to put those those parking spaces on the outside of that eighteen foot. That's not a big deal for me.
Okay. I would just if, you know, my advice is just if you guys uh, do move forward with granting this, that that is a stipulation.
And I've got as well, um, some stipu- uh, stipulations I'll kind of point out from the previous grow on in January there. Uh, one of the stipulations was P P B P P E inspection material be provided to by the applicant for all city employees inspections. Um, the owner must comply with all federal, state, and local ordinances and laws as well as secure all necessary permits and licenses. The 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 big one, an outside engineer approved by the city must confirm order control measures are able to eliminate not just orders as recognized by a reasonable person. Um, those are ones, big ones that I wanted to point out to you guys that I think are to to stay consistent with grow facilities would be appropriate.
And I will add one last thing on there, like the only, the only detriment to existing properties is what has already been granted by the the city as far as, you know, they can't have, I believe it's a school within one thousand feet of of retail. So with this already in existence and this amendment to to the 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 plan, grow facilities do not meet that requirement, I don't believe. Willie, you could, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but um, I don't think grow facilities actually have to meet that thousand foot. It's just retail.
That's correct.
One thing I'd like to see, uh, is it possible, Willie, that for you get me a copy of the description? I'd like to research that easement better so I understand what's going on. As a land surveyor, I understand how that stuff works and I'd be able to look how it matches on your plans.
Sure, that'd be great. I'll send it over to Zach and and Mike.
Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you, and I just want to go around again to the commissioners and see if there's any additional questions. So Bob had one. Uh, we'll go right back to Pam.
No, I'm fine.
Nothing. Shelley? Mick?
Oh, I'm good.
No, thank you.
Okay. Bob has one and I don't have any other questions. So this time we will close the public hearing. Move along to public comment. Agenda-related items?
Is there no, uh, I've been trying to raise my hand for the past ten minutes. Is there no chance to speak again?
Your turn was over, so you can wait your turn. Just a second.
So this will be a public comment, so. Uh, public comment, you have a name and address, please. You have up to three minutes, so. Uh, please raise your hand. Name and address again, please.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, Roy E. Henderson, seventy-eight Arthur Street, uh, in Manistee. Go ahead, Ward.
So, uh, you know, I can understand why some of the commissioners who are present uh, could make a decision as easy as yes or no uh, based on their own personal opinions on this matter, uh, such as Shelley, Mick, Roger. Um, but for us, we have a lot to lose on this proposed site. One of our companies, our family companies, we do property development. So when we talk about profo- uh, proposed facilities that could provide services to the community and to new potential families moving into the city, uh, we mean it. Uh, we currently do business in Traverse City where we develop properties here. Uh, so we have serious intentions to develop this property in the future. And we're afraid that we won't be able to do that at all and lose millions of potential dollars for the community and provide local jobs that would assist in creating this project. So, um, as easy as it is to say yes or no, it's uh, it's a lot harder for us to uh, to come to any terms on that. So, um, we mean business on this.
Yeah. Thank you.
Go ahead, Joyce.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to talk about the First Street Beach property, if I may.
Uh, name and address, please.
Yes, Joy Smith, one six four Harrison Street, Manistee. I I've lived here for twenty-two years. Spent my childhood coming up from the uh, Grand Haven area to Traverse City. Enjoyed a lot of time by the water with my folks and kind of the not-too-developed nature of this part of the state. I feel like we're right on the edge of the M twenty-two corridor and frankly, I think people come here for the natural beauty. I know that's not saleable. And I know the chamber is making a strong bid for this being a big moneymaker for our town. I don't see how it will affect my pocket. I don't know a lot about that. That's not my area of expertise, but I do know that the the natural area is a a great possession for Manistee. And that's our, that's our gem property, you know, that's our our best spot. Um, if you give me just a moment. Uh, I'd also like to say how nice Grand Haven's beach access is. It's very available to people. When when you go to the Grand Haven waterfront, it's set up for people to walk around and enjoy themselves. There's shops and all kinds of of good things for them to do, but it's not commercial there at all. And I think they, I think Grand Haven's done about the most successful job of really making their waterfront a resource to the community and to visitors. Thank you for all your hard work. I know this is difficult stuff. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Anyone else? None?
We have a hand up.
We got a hand up.
Okay.
Zach, you might have to ask him to unmute, but just a reminder, if you are on a phone, it is star six to unmute. Six two zero three, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, again, for working on these these very difficult uh, projects and using your very best uh, decision-making abilities.
Your name and address, please.
Oh, yes, Jennifer Teller, Harbor Drive, Manistee. I'm commenting on the Hampton Inn. And I've been going through the city of Manistee zoning ordinances and in section five one four. Um, article five, the the general provisions on page fourteen, number one says, parking areas required under this section and city-owned parking lots shall not be used for storage of camping within or continuous parking or storage of recreational vehicles, trailers, motor vehicles, and junk for more than twenty-four hour, more than a twenty-four hour period. So, right there, that that the the Hampton Inn cannot use our public parking lots in order to meet the requirements that they need for a five-story hotel. So I'm hoping that um, that will be taken into consideration. And um, a a big reason that this hotel should be a maximum of two to three stories. It should meet the requirements of the city uh, zoning ordinances. And also I'd like to have the signage on the top of both sides of the building eliminated because it will reduce the effect of the night sky and distraction for the surrounding residential areas. Because this is not a highway location. And as I mentioned, the parking is the big big issue and reducing the height automatically brings the hotel issue into compliance with city ordinances. And number three, the retention detention pond location directly affects the safety of the picnic area and playground around it and takes away the critical need for space there as usage increases, especially from hotel users. It will be an eyesore and nuisance to this natural area. Although it solves some other drainage issues, putting it there is just questionable. It should be put on their own property. Or draining the parking lot to other areas as the DPW suggested seems to make more sense. As finances become available in the future, those road drainage issues can be dealt with then. So I I highly agree with uh, Beth Wilkie, who was talking about the detention ponds and all the information she said uh, that they present. This is, this is such a pristine area of retention detention pond does not belong on city property there. So I I sincerely hope that you will take that into consideration and not allow the Hampton Inn to put their drainage into a pond on our property. So thank you so much for your consideration on these issues.
Anyone else?
Go ahead and raise your hand if you'd like to speak. We already spoke, didn't you, Roy? Is that right, Mike?
Someone say that.
Yeah, I I think you could allow the, if if the sun spoke, the other one could speak. I think that'd be fine as long as they identify as separate.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Yes, Roy Henderson at seventy-eight Arthur Street, Manistee. I have to ask the question, I believe Mr. McKenzie said there was provision for and will be proposed a retail shop at the uh, at this site. And uh, I believe one of your colleagues mentioned about this site would not, could not be approved for a retail site. Uh, I asked Mr. McKenzie if he, um, if he, in fact, like he said earlier, does intend to have a retail site at this at this property.
We've had a retail site there open since November.
And so it will remain open, I take it. Is that correct, Mr. McKenzie, when you start growing marijuana?
Okay, that's correct.
All right.
Is that allowed to be to grow it and to sell it on the same property? I believe that question was raised earlier.
This is, this is not for deliberation, Mr. Henderson, it's just for your comment.
It was just a question that I had. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? None? Okay. Thank you. Move along to new business. Seventy-four Arthur Street Marijuana Grow Special Use Permit. So. I'm sorry. Discussion. Um, we can move into a discussion again on this. I know we we talked about it, so. Any any other further comment before we go to a motion? By anyone? None? Okay. Is there a motion on this?
Um, I'll make a motion that uh, we uh, approve the uh, request for a marijuana grow with the uh, stipulations uh, that were presented by uh, the planning office. In addition, I would also uh, include that the uh, right of way to the Henderson properties uh, be appropriate. Uh, and again, uh, not uh, infringed upon by parking.
Okay. Is there a second?
One second.
Second by Shelley? Yeah. Any discussion, any other discussion? None? Please take role.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Schamanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Member?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Yes.
Karen Whitlam?
Yes. Um, motion or this is approved with the stipulations uh, noted by uh, Commissioner Schamanski. So, congratulations. Move along to the North Channel Investors Parcel Split. Turn that over to Zach.
Yeah, so North Channel Investors want to split their property in eighty-six Washington. Um, it looks like a a split and a recombination from the North Channel Brewery to their, um, oh, what's written? I'm losing myself. Um, the condo right there, the condo that's owned by the the same company, so. Uh, this this easement or this combination checked out with um, zoning as well as with the city accessories being allowed.
I've got a question. Is this basically the parking lot next to North Channel that we're talking about?
No. It's the ri, it's the grass area right next west of the condo.
Okay.
Just to clean up this property rather than having these odd, I guess, odd-shaped property? Zach, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let David uh, kind of explain if I can. He's the
Okay.
I, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Yeah, yeah, I'm David Tenkate. I'm one of the partners in the uh, River Park project as well as the North Channel. Um, we acquired the North Channel building and then acquired a couple of other parcels, which I, if you look at that survey, kind of pieced a bunch of stuff together and we ended up with some odd-shaped pieces. And the idea here is that the Edgewater uh, units are all sold. Their association has formed and they would like to acquire the the property, basically square it off so that they own that grassy area and the base, the hill to the immediate west of the um, Edgewater Building. And and the uh, the property didn't really present much use to the North Channel building. And, and the, uh, the property didn't really present much use to the North Channel Building, so we've got an agreement in principle, of course, contingent upon, upon your and the city council's approval of the split.
Okay. All right, um... I'm gonna run down the commissioners, if, if there's any questions. Pam?
I don't have any issues with this surveyor, I can't say about it. I'd make sense.
Pam, you're kind of in and out on that.
Yeah, I really don't have any issue with it, I'd, I'd like to hear what Bob has to say, since he's the surveyor, but it kind of makes sense to me to, to square it up.
Okay. Thank you. Shelley?
I, I second what Pam said, it looks like it just makes sense, if the property doesn't have any use to the North Channel and the condo association wants to take it over, then I don't see any issue with it.
Okay, thank you. Nick?
Uh, the only question I have is, is there any, uh, proposed future use for that small piece of property adjacent to, uh, the condos?
It's a hill, isn't it?
Well, a hill with a little bit of grassy area going down.
If I may? To my, to my knowledge, there's no intended use, it is very steep, um, there is a house on the next parcel to the west, um, so I guess in theory, something could be done, but once it's merged with the Edgewater project, um, I, I don't see that as very likely. I, of course, I can't rule it out, but I, they've not said a thing about wanting to develop it, and I think logistically, the topography there would be at least a challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Roger?
My only question would be is, uh, I have no problem with what they're trying to do, but as I understand it, the Edgewater condominium building is completely sold? Is that correct?
Yes.
Each of, each of the units have been sold to private owners.
All right, okay. And how wide is that area that we're picking, that they're going to pick up? Do we know though, 54 feet?
Uh, it looks like...
Something? Yeah, okay, no, no problem, thank you.
And we'll...
Okay, yeah, looking at the survey drawings and stuff, it makes sense for that to, um, be merged over there, that additional 80 feet of, uh, width there. Knowing the topography of that area, building anything there would be logistically expensive, very, very expensive. And more, it'd be cost more than probably all the condos that are sitting there in Edgewater now, combined as one. So, from a standpoint, a surveying standpoint and design, uh, it's basically gonna be kind of a recreation area more than anything else, and I can see that would, that would be the fit for it. And that's all I've got. And it makes sense for, uh, squaring up parcels, I mean, if they ever want to sell stuff, if kind of the brewery ever sells, it'd make it simpler for them.
Yeah, good. Now, to me, it, it makes perfect sense, so, um... I will entertain a motion to approve or deny the...
I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Please take rolls.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Yes. Motion is approved. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Yeah, better luck.
So next, we have a... Parcel combination at 1073 Sweetnham, uh, Drive in Manistee. So, come back to Zach.
Yeah, so this is Robert and Susan Archie, uh, it's, it's from the sound that they had acquired these parcels through the years and with the, um, lake, the lake front going in and out, it's kind of changed their plans here. And, uh, the end goal is just being they're gonna combine these for tax purposes, so...
Okay, makes sense. Okay, we'll run down the questions. Pam?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Shelley?
No second.
Nick?
Since I was one of the first residents in that area, I know very well the challenges that, uh, the homeowners have, so, uh, it, it makes perfect sense to them to, uh, to do this. That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Roger?
Uh, no, not a problem, not a problem.
All right, thank you. Bob?
It makes perfect sense to me, other than that, we're good on it.
Okay. All right. Well, it, uh, I echo your thoughts, uh, it makes perfect sense, so, with that, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to approve, excuse me, approve or deny, uh, this, uh, parcel combination. Ask for motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve this parcel, uh, combination to the city to be approved, as is.
As is, okay. Bob, I mean, excuse me, second?
I'll second, Nick.
Nick, okay, any other discussion? None? Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Karen Whitlam?
Thank you, and congratulations. The next, next one is a parcel combination at 321 First Avenue.
Yeah, so this one is Chester McGee, Chester McGee at 321 and 319 First Avenue. Again, he's wanting to combine his parcels here for tax purposes. Zoning checks out, and the city assessor also checked out on that.
Okay. All right. Good on the roll call, Pam?
Is that one house, or is it a duplex?
Uh, I believe he said it was a duplex.
Okay.
Uh, Zach? I just did a property survey in that area last weekend. From my look at the building, it looks to be one complete building with a garage on each end, I don't see any separate entrance, so there's just one, when I was out there.
Okay, I was just, the, the area was just a little confusing there.
Yeah, it looks like they might have been two separate buildings at one time, but the one on the east is the main garage, the western part is the main building, and there's also a garage behind the main building.
Okay.
Like I said, I had some work, I poked around, what's that?
Is that on the L?
The L's got the garage in the back, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I figured since I was in the area working, I took the place out.
It's right in your neighborhood, anyway, so...
Yeah, I could walk there.
All right, Shelley?
No, I don't have anything.
Yeah? Nick?
Nothing for me.
Roger?
No, I'm good with it, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then Bob?
Uh, I already said my stuff, I was earlier, I answered mine.
Pardon me?
I got everything I needed to say when I was talking back when I stopped.
So you're good with it?
Yep.
Okay, I don't have any other questions? Makes sense? So with that, make a, entertain a motion to approve or deny the parcel combination at 321 Avenue. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I mean, if nobody else will.
One second.
Thank you.
Is that Pam? Shelley, okay. Any other discussion? None? Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semanski?
Yes.
Commissioner... Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Karen Whitlam?
Yes. Thank you, so motion approved. Congratulations, and the last, um, parcel combination at 174 Quincy Street. Turn it over to Zach.
So this one is with Leroy and Robin Peacock, uh, they're over at 174, um, Quincy, and again, they just want to combine their parcels here for tax purposes and paperwork.
Yeah. All right, um... Good on, Pam?
No questions.
Okay. Shelley?
None here.
Okay.
No.
Nick?
No questions.
Roger?
No questions, no questions.
Bob?
Uh, just makes sense to me, because the parcel to the north, it has, uh, next to an undeveloped road, it's probably, it will never, ever be built, so it'll make that back parcel accessible.
Is that with a dotted line, Bob?
The... The dotted line, where you got the two parcels side by side around Quincy, but the parcel behind it is got a, uh, planted road there, but that road will never probably ever be built, so you're making that back parcel accessible and usable.
Is that Madison? Is that plotted for Madison?
I think it is that one, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. I, I don't have anything, so with that, um, take a motion to approve or deny this parcel combination at 174 Quincy. There a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Shelley, all right?
No second.
Bob, any discussion? None? Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Karen Whitlam?
Yes. Okay. That is granted for 174 Quincy Street, so congratulations. Uh, moving along to old business, 101 Lake Shore Drive. Excuse me, awaiting the Site Plan Review Committee notes. Turn it over to Zach.
Yeah, so, the Site Plan Review Committee actually just finished their review today here, so, um, the applicant had made some alterations based on, on the discussion you guys had, the first meeting, over here, and then, um... So this time, the, the Site Planner View has, has their comments, and they're, they're ready for you guys to set a special meeting or wait until the next scheduled meeting, so that's up to you guys, but I thought now might be an appropriate time to announce that.
All right, well, with that, um... Get your, uh, comments on maybe holding a special meeting on May 20th to the commissioners? Does that fit to everybody's schedule?
Good for me.
Pam?
Yeah, it's good for me.
Okay, thank you. Shelley?
Works for me. Can I ask?
Nick?
Uh, yes, at seven o'clock?
Yes. Okay. Bob?
Roger. Works.
I thought you were calling for Roger.
It works.
I just checked, are you at me yet?
So Roger, May 20th, at 7:00 PM?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, awesome, good.
Yes.
You scheduled that, Zach? I can, I can work on that. Shelley, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, um, I may have asked this before, so I apologize if you're reiterating, who, who is on the Site Plan Review Committee?
So Site Plan Review Committee is the, uh, city police, city fire, city DPW, city engineer, and, um, outside of that, you, we can call more people if we need more expertise, so oftentimes we'll call city attorney, um, you know, we can go outside of that as well, so together, and everybody goes over their notes, so it's similar to the, to the, to the, you know, what we went through tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah?
Zach, do they need a motion that, to table this until the special use meeting?
We're gonna need a motion.
So with that, yes, um, make a, entertain a motion to table this to May 20th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Roger, second?
I'll second.
My Nick, any discussions? Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Semanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Karen Whitlam?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, public comments, communication, um, if there's anyone, uh, in our audience that would like to make a comment, um, name and address, please, and you have up to three minutes.
Go ahead and raise your hand, or you can press, uh, star nine, to raise your hands wrong, looks like we have some... Last word is 6203.
Yes, thank you, uh, commissioners, for setting this special meeting for May 20th for time for more review.
Could we have your name and address, please?
Oh, yes, Jennifer Teller, Harbor Drive, Manistee. Uh, in the minutes of the April 1st meeting under 101 Lake Shore Drive, it does say that Mr. Sacola will contact the city attorney regarding the projects of legality issues. I'm just wondering how we can find out what the results of his work is for this project? Because, of course, that really, whatever he says regarding the proj, projects, the legality, governs everything else. So, um, if you can direct, direct us, the public, you know, on that question, that would be helpful. But I would like to say, too, that, um, looking over everything for that development, my two main concerns, or three main concerns, are the huge lighting at the top on both sides of the building, which really does not seem necessary for that location, and also the parking, uh, is a big issue, and it, it is not in compliance with city ordinances, as I mentioned a little earlier, um, with the section 514 of the parking, uh, letter I under Article 5 of parking, uh, you cannot park in city parking lots overnight. So that right there, uh, they must have the required parking on their own property, which then relates into reducing the size of the building, so that you have less parking spaces, or you, at least you meet the ordinance. And the third one, which, I don't know which one of these is most important, but the detention area really needs to be eliminated from the whole package, and, uh, we need that land, it's, it's not there to become a, you know, a sloppy mess, which it eventually will, and it would just take away from the whole natural setting there, and, and take away from the amount of land available for picnickers, which is going to increase if this hotel goes through, no matter what size it is. Uh, and the amount of use there will increase over the years with more population, so we need to save as much public land as we can and not use it for runoff from a private property. Again, the DPW gave other options, which I think can be used, and, um, the issue with the, the overflow on the streets there can be dealt with at another time, and you can use those tax dollars that the hotel is gonna be giving to, uh, fix those. So thank you so much, and we appreciate all that you're doing on this issue.
Any, any other public comment? Any, any other public comment?
You can go ahead and raise your hand or press star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, we will move along. Staff reports.
I've got nothing new for you guys.
Okay, thank you Zach. Mike?
So we will be working very shortly here. With the the site plan review committee closing today to put a lot of the information out, I think that. The public's requesting on this mark. You should probably see it within a packet on the city website within the next day or next business day or two. And it will be available, so it's not that. We didn't want to address people's concerns, but when we're getting hit up by, you know, ten, fifteen. Twenty emails a day requesting information on it, when we, we usually put out a packet a week ahead of time to to alert people what's going on. We will respond, you know, but. We we, we try to just give everybody the information at the same time, and we don't want to put out false information with the, with the. The site plan review committee just wrapping up in the afternoon today, it was actually pretty late in the day when we finally got the city engineers. His, his feedback on it. You know, we didn't want to put out that false, that false information or put out incomplete information, so. We will, you know, within the next business day or two, be putting up something on the city website to that, to show not only, you know. In, in a bid to be very transparent, even though we didn't have to submit it, the city attorney. Comments on the PUD as well as the drainage and the new site plans as well as the new renderings for this project. So the, let me be clear on that, the, the, the city retention pond and PUD were. Protected from FOIA, but we felt like, you know, you know, in a bid to be transparent that we would release those, so. The site plans would have been released anyways as well as the rendering, so I just wanted to clarify that, but. So you will look for that within the next business day or two. It will be out on the website. If you've put in a FOIA request, we'll, we'll respond to that. When we put it out there, we want everybody to get the information at the same time. And we have five days to respond to FOIA requests. We knew this would be up within a day or two, so. If you're waiting on that, we will be pointing you there and responding shortly, so just to let you guys know.
So probably by, latest by Monday, Mike?
That that would be. Yep, latest by Monday.
Okay, great. Nancy, you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay, thank you so much for your hard work. Member discussion, we'll go to Pam, anything?
No, I'm, I'm good tonight.
Okay. Shelley?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Go to Mick?
No, except that, you know, they did run a newspaper article on the legal review of the Lake Shore property. What about four or five days ago, I think?
Yeah, they did.
Roger?
Yeah, my only question is to Zach is, remember by Roscoe, what are they building here?
That's gonna be. Parking lot for employees and we're gonna house the dumpsters and recyclers.
Oh. Oh, okay, I just wondered, that's all. No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Bob?
I want to thank Mike and Zach for their work on this. I know they're working their tails off on it. We appreciate their work and we look forward to seeing more stuff coming from those guys.
All right, well, my thoughts exactly, you guys, gals, Nancy, Mike and Zach, working their tail off, like Bob said, on this project. It's a big project for Manistee, so see where it goes. I have one question for the commissioners before we close this down is. By calling each commissioner for discussion, is that okay, or do you want to go back to the other way?
I like it.
I thought it was fine.
I, I think it worked well.
All right.
Works pretty good.
Good, all right. The only comment we don't have is Marlene, but she's not here, but I'm pretty sure she's for it, so. But this time I don't have anything, but have a great weekend, have a great Mother's Day weekend. Weather probably be good, so enjoy yourself. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
At. Eight thirty-five, so we beat our record. All right, have a good night.
Good night. Good night.